The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the April 25th, 2017 Special Counsel Meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on May 1st, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Corrections. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the May 2nd, 2017 Regular Counsel Meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on May 9th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Corrections. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the May 16th, 2017 Bills and Claims as audited by Interim City Manager Becker. Okay.
Pick one.
So moved by Councilman Walsh, seconded by Councilman Powell?
We got those bills.
Was I even close? Okay. Abstentions. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Okay, we're gonna take a special moment now and I'm gonna share a really amazing story with our audience. The City of Casper would like to recognize and commend Annie Humphrey, whose quick, decisive actions helped the City of Casper employee Sarah Harris from possible life-threatening injuries. These actions were nothing less than heroic and reflect not only on Annie as a person, but also reflect on the entire community. Casper is grateful to have such a kind and caring citizen. On October 6th, 2016, Annie Humphrey started her day as she did any other day, not knowing that it would be different. As Annie was performing her normal duties as a United States postal carrier, she heard someone crying out for help. Instead of ignoring those cries and continuing on her route, Annie stopped what she was doing to search for the source of those cries. Annie's two-block search ended up finding Sarah Harris, a City of Casper solid waste collection operator, pinned and crushed between her collection truck and a light pole. Annie helped unpin Sarah, carefully lowering her to the ground. To Annie's amazement, Sarah, who was badly injured, got up and climbed into the cab of her truck to make a distress call over the radio. Concerned for Sarah's possible life-threatening injuries, Annie gently helped Sarah to the ground again, consoling her and keeping her still until help arrived. After the accident, Annie kept in touch and supported Sarah during her hospitalization, her recovery, and she still keeps in touch with her today. The City of Casper and the Solid Waste Division are eternally grateful to Annie Humphrey. The actions she took that day going above and beyond her call of duty for a fellow citizen were heroic and make us proud to call Casper home. On behalf of the City Council, I thank you for your willingness to help someone in need, and I'd like to present you with a certificate of commendation. Ms. Humphrey, can you please come forward again? All the way up. Not only do we get to torture each twice, but we get to do a photo op too, so. Anybody else need pictures?
Thank you.
We need more pictures. Oh wait, do you want me in the picture? Let's get these two and then I can get in there. Okay.
I've decided I wanted, you know, embarrass her a little bit more. She really doesn't think she deserves any credit, but, and I hate speaking, so I wrote it out. I remember feeling like I'd been folded in half and hearing a loud crunch and my legs going numb. I remember trying to stand and being completely unable to. My legs would not work at all. I was screaming for help and thinking the only person that could help me was me because nobody was coming out of their house. I used my arms to drag myself to the cab of the truck and pulled myself up the steps. I got on the radio, took a deep breath, and said I'm at 14th and Locust and I need an ambulance. I hunched over my seat and started to lose control of my body and I was terrified. I worked with Annie before my job here at the city, at the post office. She was always kind, helpful, and funny, one of a few memorable faces. I always stopped to say hi when I saw her. What Annie doesn't realize is that had I fallen from my truck alone, I may have displaced all those fractures. She also doesn't realize that in that moment I knew with my medical background knowledge and the feeling and sound my body made that I could very well die. I knew I had broke my pelvis and I knew I was in shock and potentially bleeding out. It was in the 30s and I was dripping sweat. And that's exactly what I told the paramedic, which was all I could say. I broke my hips and I'm in shock. My paramedic also happened to be the husband of my coworker and someone I'll always feel a special connection to. What Annie also doesn't realize is that she gave me comfort. She gave me the closest feeling I had to the love of a mother in what could have been my last moment. My injuries were terrible yet miraculous. I had a shattered tailbone and five complete pelvic fractures and have extensive, potentially lifelong nerve damage. Pelvic fractures have a mortality rate of about 10% and I had five. Sometimes knowing medical stuff is not a good thing. I could hear my coworker's voice telling me, "We're in the top 10 most dangerous jobs year after year, above police and fire, yet we don't receive hazard pay," something I wasn't super entertained by at the time. One of the many weird thoughts I had, like all the gym time I had done going down the drain and being really sad about them having to cut my boots off. Annie gave me comfort. She may have felt invaluable or helpless, but she was anything but those things. There were many people by my side that day. I owe it to them and Annie to show them I'm all right. I had big plans before my accident, two of which included applying for the police department and becoming a foster mother, both of which are on hold or in my forever dream bucket. Life has been hard. I have been through very traumatic life events the last year. I have felt broken and broke, but I'm proud to be here today trying to work and trying to walk without appearing to be in pain. But that's because that's who I am and always will be, and people like Annie remind me why. There are always people to push for, and when the going gets tough, there will always be people pushing for you. I'm surrounded by them, Annie being one of them. She and a lot of the other people, some of my coworkers that are here, have been really good to me. They're the reason I'm here and the reason I continue to smile. I don't have family here, and you all and Annie are the closest thing I have, so I love you guys and thank you.
Ladies, I think you inspire all of us and let us know how important life truly is. So, is there anything else counsel would like to say? Thank you both for your strength and your heroic actions. So congratulations and it's an honor to meet both of you. Okay. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of an amendment to the liquor license laws. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. I have three exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Tracy Belser to Liz Becker. That document dated May 11th, 2017. Exhibit number two, that being the affidavit publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated May 15th, 2017. And exhibit number three, that being the affidavit of website publication as published on the City of Casper website dated May 9th, 2017.
Thank you. City Manager, report.
Your Honor, Members of Counsel. The Wyoming State Legislature, this particular 2017 session enacted many changes to the laws that govern liquor licensing for bars, restaurants, and similar establishments. One of the primary changes involved dispensing rooms, and until now, facilities such as bars and restaurants needed to designate a specific dispensing room from which to pour alcohol. The City of Casper's municipal code has an extensive chapter of liquor law. Tonight, we're gonna look at a first reading for a portion of that liquor law, which we're looking at wanting to bring forward some different phases in some of the changes because it is extensive. It is recommended that the municipal code be amended in order to remain consistent with the new state statutes. And due to the current businesses that we have here in Casper that are needing to consider the alteration of the design of their buildings to currently construct dispensing rooms, city staff is recommending the following amendments be prioritized before some of the other liquor law amendments. So I'm gonna step through some of the highlights of what the city staff is recommending for this first phase of amending our liquor license, or liquor ordinance, pardon me. The proposed amendment would change the term dispensing room to licensed building. The liquor license application process would reduce advertising requirements from four consecutive weeks down to two consecutive weeks. We would also look at allowing restaurants to have two dispensing rooms. It would also specify that restaurant employees may enter the dispensing room, provided that the employees are at least 18 years old. That is the minute that they turn 18 is what we're defining as 18 years of age. That they, again, can go into the dispensing rooms as employees, of course, not be able to consume. Some of the future phases that we'll be bringing to you do rely on the hours of operation related to liquor laws, but for tonight's first reading of these ordinance amendments, we are looking at the ones that I just profiled. We have, again, as our city attorney said, met our publication requirements, and then that would conclude my city manager's report.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issues involving the amendment to please approach the lectern. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Michael Reed, 1615 Lucre Drive, Casper. I'm here this evening as a member of Tin Shack LLC, which is popper wine and spirits. There was a lot of changes made at the legislature, some of them not what we wanted, but that's just how life is. I understand you're just addressing the dispensing rooms this evening, but there's two places in the dispensing room where you could kind of shortcut what you're gonna do later, and that's your hours of operations on clubs and regular retail establishments. You've got clubs from 9:00 in the morning until 2:00 in the morning, Monday through Sunday. You've got regular stores from 6:00 a.m. in the morning till 2:30 or 2:00, Monday through Saturday, and then you've got them from 10:00 to 10:30 on Sundays. We would like to see it go the same as the clubs because when you have the private clubs being open later than regular stores, you run into issues like we ran into not too far from here with a VFW club that really wasn't a VFW club but operated as one, and it took us a year to get that thing straightened out. So, it just seems to me like it'd be easy to go ahead and do that change, and then I have a real concern, and I had this same concern at the legislature, of taking away the age restriction in a bar. I mean, it seems to me it ought to be 21. It's 21 in a retail establishment, but in a bar, the way it is right now, if you do what you're gonna do, 18-year-olds can be in the bar. And I just don't think that's a good idea. I think that's gonna run into trouble sooner or later. As a bar owner, I'm not gonna let that happen. I'm gonna make my own rule there and say, "No, you can't." I'm just not thinking that everybody might do that. And I think it might become a problem for you and the police force and that establishment before it's all over. So, other than that, that's the only two changes I'd like to see you make. And you certainly don't have to make those tonight. You can make them whenever you want, but it just seems like it'd be easier in the next couple readings to do that.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Reed? Go ahead.
Mr. Reed, this is your area of expertise. Is there any concern that an 18-year-old could be in a bar and obviously drink alcohol that someone else purchased and that the owner could be cited?
Absolutely, and that's part of the concern. And you could have somebody come up with a great idea. "I'm gonna have a mixed club where I'll have alcohol, you know, for the 21s and the 18s can come in and socialize with all those people." And to me, it's just a recipe for disaster. Sooner or later, somebody's gonna get some alcohol. We all know that, you know, I'd like to say that I was perfect when I was young. I wasn't. Tried to do it just like everybody else does. It's just a tougher deal now, and I just don't think it's a good idea. I mean, if you take your kids in a bar and you sit there and drink, and then you pile them in the car and you're driving home and you get pulled over and you've had too much to drink, all of a sudden you can get a child endangerment charge for putting them in the car, but you took them to the bar? It just doesn't seem right. I just don't think that 18-year-olds or 17-year-olds or 6-year-olds actually, there is no age restriction, could be in that bar.
Go ahead.
One of the arguments, as I understand it, is that 18-year-olds might serve even though they can't consume and that they're not taken out of that workforce. Based on your experience, is there a significant number of 18- to 21-year-olds working in the bars?
I don't think there's as many 18- to 21s working in the bars. There's a lot of 18-year-olds, of course, that work in restaurants. It is possible for them to do it. Matter of fact, I called the State Liquor Association today and for Tom Montoya so he could tell me where the rule is that says you can't have a bartender that's 18-years-old, because we won't have a dispensing room. We'll have a licensed building. We won't have a dispensing room. So unless it says that you can't have an 18-year-old as a bartender in a dispensing room, the only ones that are gonna be affected by that are restaurants. Do you really want an 18-year-old bartender? I don't know.
Other questions, comments, feedback? Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Councilman Mayor Matt Galloway, 4017 West 38th. Representing Galloway's Pub, Ken Cork, Rearing 22. I'm also acting president of Natrona County Liquor Dealer Association. I do want to make sure that it's known. I will say things and I will make sure you know that I do speak on behalf of the Natrona County Liquor Dealers, and then there'll be things I say that I don't. Normally, I prepare. I get very nervous in public speaking, so please bear with me. That's why I usually write it out. I didn't have time today. Anyway, I really agree with some of the things that Mike has said. I wanna echo a few of those things, but ultimately, I don't want to convolute things tonight with regards to dispensing rooms because that is incredibly time-sensitive. Mr. Cersei and his son and I and my partners are embarking on very expensive adventures right now, and these could really hinder what we've got going, and we really think it's important for the Eclipse, for what's going on downtown, that we really address dispensing room now. As for his concerns with regards, and this is me speaking personally, with, you know, minors being in there, I think it is something that needs to be addressed. We addressed at a meeting we had. It was a great forum with city officials from Mills, Casper, Evansville, Natrona County, and then liquor dealers alike, and that was something that was discussed rather extensively. I think that there needs to be a discernible difference between someone that's working and someone that's actually there as a customer, because I don't think there is a problem with having someone personally, this is me personally, again, being in there 18, 19, or 20 that's working. Now I can see where there is a concern, especially for a guy like me that operates places that are more bar than restaurant. I could see where that would be a concern for me. Fortunately, I don't allow 21 and under any circumstances, so I'm kind of out of that conversation. I do echo what he says about possibly addressing the hours of operation, maybe kind of doing that now. I get that we've got a lot of things to address, as Ms. Becker stated, and I don't want to convolute that again, but it would be really easy to make these more synergistic and making the clubs and us the same. Again, at that same meeting, as acting president, we came to a consensus as Natrona County Liquor Dealers that we felt the 10:00 a.m. on Sunday mornings was a little suffocating for a myriad of reasons, one of which is packaged liquor stores trying to serve alcohol people headed to the lake that may be going out there prior to 10:00 a.m. Myself, an example was having El Marco Lanes. We have Boeing tournaments that start sometimes at 7:00 a.m., and some of those people do want to have drinks beforehand. Pool tournaments, dart tournaments, you know, the list goes on. And it would also be nice, you know, to maybe have a breakfast scenario where they can have mimosas or Bloody Marys at a 9:00 a.m. or an 8:00 a.m. or something like that. So there's some concern there. We kind of went back and forth as the 10:00 p.m. law. A lot of us actually really like it. I love it because it's the one time in the week. I know at 10:00 o'clock, my phone's not gonna ring. But we did kind of go back and forth between 10:00, 2:00 a.m. and all this, and kind of came to a consensus that we felt midnight would be a fair deal on that. Again, if you don't address that tonight, that won't be as traumatic, I would feel, as not addressing the dispensing rooms, but as Mike said, it would be maybe easy to wrap those up in one bundle because these are just a few of the main items. There are many more, as she can attest to. Really what happened at the state, just to explain this a little bit, the state basically said, "Cities, you're on your own." And we have these very, you know, antiquated laws from many, many years ago, and they felt it was finally time to just, you know, get rid of these laws. So they kind of just turned it over to the municipalities, counties, and such. So there are some things we need to address. We're fortunate that we have the laws existing as a city, so we're protected. We're not gonna have just total thunderdome going on in Casper, Wyoming, and I don't want the citizens or anyone like to be fearful of that. We still have our point systems and we still have things protecting the community from license holders not acting appropriately, so I certainly don't want anyone to fear that. Let's see. Last but not least, and I just want to put a bug in your ear while I have the stage here, we are, as bar owners, through the city, allowed to apply for, I think it's two and maybe four times a year where we do want extended hours. We would actually like to consider, and we have to kind of do it now because it's gonna happen quicker when we realize it, the Eclipse weekend, that Sunday, the day before, of possibly having at least till 2:00 a.m. because we think that's gonna be a really big weekend. We think it'd be important and we think it'd be, to be quite honest, you know, financially beneficial to us. So I just wanted to put that bug in your ear because I know you guys are incredibly busy with all the other things that are going on in our city. I guess I would open this up to questions, but I would like to thank you guys for enduring what you've endured the past few weeks. It's been complicated. It's been rough, but I commend you on your guys' hard work and I look forward to working with you guys in a very near future. So, any questions you guys have of me or of the council, or, excuse me, of the committee, the Natrona County?
I guess I just have a quick question. So, if we do adjust the age, the companies sound like you guys are already planning on self-regulating regardless.
Correct.
Okay. So if we do allow 18-year-olds, then if you have a difficulty hiring staff and you find the perfect, intelligent 18-year-old, you've got flexibility to hire an employee, but you could still say nobody under 21 can be a customer?
For sure.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, this is me speaking personally. I see Mike's point, and it just takes one bad seed. It takes one guy to allow that chaos to rear its head and do a mixed club, and I promise you, if that does exist, it will get bad. It will happen fast. But do I think that we can monitor that and control that ourselves? Do I think we have laws in place? Do I think we have police force in place to monitor that? I do, for sure. Now, I think on the employee's side, I think we should, for sure, personally allow 18 and over all hours in dispensing rooms in all these areas. As for the customer, I'll be completely honest, I'm on the fence on that. I don't have the right answer. I wish I did. I wish there was one that would be very definitive and say, "Okay, this will solve this problem. This will solve that." You know, the bigger cities have seemed to self-regulate at a pretty modest and very good, you know, very good way for many years now. So, I don't know. I truly don't know the answer. I apologize. I don't have that for you.
No, that's okay. Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor? Good evening.
Tony Cersei, 4410 Wolf Creek Road. I just wanted to speak in favor of going to the building, of course, from dispensing room. We have numerous projects in works, and we've actually had the design already set forth around the building, so we're hopeful that this will get passed to go to the building ordinance. Okay? That's all I really have to say.
Questions or comments for Mr. Cersei? Okay, thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak in favor?
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening. Charlie Tyrell, Charlie T's Pizzeria, holder of restaurant license number seven, and I live at 526 West 12th. I would just like to see that the ordinance is changed so that servers can be 18 plus that minute. It's hard to find young servers that are over 21. The state allows 21. I would appreciate it if the City of Casper would also support 18 for servers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last chance to speak in favor. This time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issues involving the amendment, please approach the lectern. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Keith Rollin, 542 South Durbin. I'm absolutely opposed to letting 18, 19, 20-year-olds serve liquor. We have a very big problem in this city with minors drinking, and that is reflected then in other things and issues in the city and the county, such as their terrible graduation rate of 71% in this county, which is basically associated in New York City, where some of our worst ghetto schools have that kind of graduation rate, where they don't speak English, they have crime. But here in Natrona County, we have the same rate as they do in New York City, and I think that's partially to do because of the fact kids drink a lot in this county and also therefore in the city. And you have to be very naive if you think a server who serves at 18 and serves a martini to a customer and it was served on the rocks and the person says, "Oh no, I ordered that straight up." It goes back to the dispensing room. What do you think's gonna happen with that drink? Throw it in the garbage? I don't think so. It's gonna be consumed by either that person or somebody else in that dispensing room if they're 18, 19, 20-year-old. It happens? You don't think it doesn't happen because it's gonna. In New York City, it's one of the very few things that... In New York City, is one of the very few things I agree with New York City ordinance, because I can't stand the most of the ordinance, they're too restrictive, is you cannot touch liquor, either going to or from a table unless you're 21. Absolutely enforced. If a place gets caught with that, they can even have illegal aliens working there, and they don't get much trouble. But boy, if they get caught with that, they lose their liquor license, so that is absolutely enforced. They'll hire illegal people, but they won't hire anybody under 21. And for that reason, is because you get sued in New York State if you have an employee that drinks on your premises in a bar or something like that, and they're in an accident. The person who hired that person, the restaurant manager, the owner, all are liable, and they get sued for millions. I give you a hint, if anybody hits me, and they're 19-years-old, and they were drinking at a restaurant that serves, I will sue them, and I will sue the city council and the state. I'm sorry, it's 21 for drinking. You are opening up a Pandora's box by letting these other kids work there. If they have trouble getting 18, 19, 20-year-olds or other people to work, let them get another job, but 21 and above only. If they can't hire someone 21 and above to be a waiter or bartender, then pay them more. You pay them some change per hour, maybe that's the issue why you can't get somebody over 21. Pay them a decent salary, then you'll get them. I don't want to be liable in a car accident for something else with someone who's drinking underage. Do not pass this, do not. It's a terrible reflection on the city for us to have people that are this age being able to serve. It looks ridiculous. What other parts of the country can cite me where people can work and be 18, 19, 20-years-old and serve liquor? Anywhere.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Rollin? Okay, who else would like to speak in opposition? Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against the issues involving the amendment to the liquor license laws, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Casper Municipal Code to change the requirements for restaurant dispensing rooms, remove references to dispensing rooms for various types of licensed liquor establishments, and to apply regulations to licensed buildings for establishments with restaurant liquor licenses, retail liquor licenses, resort liquor licenses, limited retail liquor licenses, bar and grill liquor licenses, permitted microbreweries, and permitted satellite wineries.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Discussion. Councilman Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And so by making this, if you had a full retail license, what we're saying is that the law would authorize an 18-year-old to be in the room in the establishment. And it's my fault for not reading it clearly. I thought we were talking about just the restaurant-type licenses where there was already that mixed crowd in there. But a full retail license would, the law would open it up. The intent is an employee is working in there, but the law would open it up, and we would open it up where an 18-year-old could be present if an owner allowed it. So I don't have any problem with the dispensing room thing. But I agree with not allowing 18-year-olds into a bar area. And I don't know if that's best addressed with an amendment or moving forward with this one, putting some thought together on making an amendment that would make more sense instead of just a knee-jerk reaction is probably the best course of action, but...
Maybe easiest for us to go ahead and pass so that we can keep the dispensing part that they're worried about time-wise, take the rest of it to the next work session, and maybe make changes or kind of investigate some of the suggestions, and then on second reading, we could maybe make those changes. Councilman Powell, did you want to add something to that?
Thank you, Your Honor. You just said what I was going to say.
Okay. Other thoughts, comments from council?
Just a quick response. I know a lot of 18-year-olds that are very responsible. Part of that is that we also see 18-year-olds that go and die for our country and carry a gun. And so there's a lot of things, a lot of responsibility. And so knowing that I work with college students and youth, they take offense to the idea that they are irresponsible and they would do that. I think there are a lot of young people that we can be very proud of in this community.
Anyone else? So for the audience, then, what I think council's looking at is we're going to go ahead and move this forward, but we do hear your concerns, comments, suggestions, so what we'll do is put those on the work session for next week so that we can get the part moving forward that you need. So when we come back for second reading, you may hear something a little bit different should council decide to kind of incorporate those suggestions or changes. Anyone else? Please cast your vote, and please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
On the agenda is a public hearing for the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 34. However, the applicant has withdrawn the application. The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, at the request of the applicant, cancel the public hearing concerning the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 34.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Walsh. Please cast your vote, and please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the issuance of Microbrewery Liquor License Number 4. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. I have four exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Tracy Belser to Liz Becker dated May 8, 2017. Exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated May 15, 2017. Exhibit number three, that being the affidavit of website publication as published on the City of Casper website, that document dated April 27, 2017. And exhibit number four being the actual liquor license application, which was filed with the city on March 16, 2017.
You want to go for your report?
I do, Your Honor. Members of council, Brew Story LLC, which does business as Frontier Brewing Company, has applied for Microbrewery Liquor License Number 4, which is located at 117 East 2nd Street. Yay, technical assistance. And we've put the map up, which is, again, the location downtown of the former Woolford Shoe Business. The focus of Frontier Brewing Company is to create and distribute great craft beer. And currently, Casper has no microbreweries, so they would like to be the first, and they hope to be open by midsummer. All publication requirements have been followed, as the city attorney just said, and that would conclude the city manager's report.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issuance of the Microbrewery License Number 4, please approach the lectern. Good evening.
Good evening. I will keep my remarks very short. Todd Titus, 1916 Woolwick Court, member-owner of Frontier Brewing Company, and I just, I haven't done this before, so here to say, to express appreciation for the council in considering this. Secondly, I want to express appreciation for the city staff. They have multiple people have helped us sort of navigate these waters, applying for a microbrewery license, at one point applying for the restaurant license and deciding that wasn't really ultimately the direction we wanted to go. They've been very helpful, very responsive to our request. And I think lastly, just echoing that, as a longtime member of the Casper community, I've moved away twice and chosen to come back and live here and raise my family and my three children. I'm very excited about being part of something that is in the heart of downtown, in a great old historic building, in a fantastic space. The landlord has been fantastic to work with, and for us, it's just really exciting to be part of something, one of the many, many things happening in downtown. And again, I hope it's something that a lot of people can come in and enjoy and appreciate and experience themselves. We don't have plans to be a bar that's open all the time. We want it to be sort of a quieter place to sit down and relax and have conversation, and we're supporting everything else that's happening downtown as well. But just appreciate your consideration for this, and those are my remarks. Happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Any questions? Okay, congratulations, good luck. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor? Good evening.
Sean Houck, 1219 South Walcott, Casper. I echo Todd's sentiments. I'm also one of the partners in Frontier Brewing Company, and we are craft beer lovers. And when we saw the Wonder Bar originally, before we knew what was going to happen with it, closed down, we were devastated, there was nowhere to get locally-produced craft beer. And by the way, it's Craft Beer Week, so happy Craft Beer Week. But we wanted to solve that problem, and so we've been delighted with the support of the city staff in helping us get to the point we needed to get to. It is a long and arduous process, which many of you have heard me complain about on multiple occasions, but I do appreciate your consideration. We think this is a fantastic use of one of the many microbrewery licenses that exist for the City of Casper to use, and we hope to see, we know we'll see lots more microbreweries popping up in the city, and we think that's going to be creating great culture and great things for folks to do here. So we're excited, and we thank you for your consideration.
Questions for Mr. Houck? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Okay, last chance to speak in favor.
Matt Galloway, 417 West 38th, haven't moved in the last five minutes. I just want to congratulate these guys, and I really hope you guys approve this. This is not a pipe dream. These are not a couple guys that are hoping just to open a brewery. I know Mr. Powell and some others were there for the art walk when we got to go tour what they plan to do. These are guys that put money where their mouth is. Their landlord, Mr. Talbert, did the same. It is a beautiful facility. It's only going to make downtown better. It's going to help us all work together that are doing things down there, so I just want to congratulate them, and I really, really hope that we get this through because it's going to be imperative and really a good part of the city, so thank you.
Questions for Mr. Galloway? You're good. Anyone else? This time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issuance of the Microbrewery License, please approach the lectern. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against, the issuance of the Microbrewery License Number 4, I now declare the public hearing closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the issuance of Microbrewery Liquor License Number 4.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Powell. Catch you next time, sorry. Any discussion? Amendments? Okay, please cast your vote, and please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the transfer of ownership of Retail Liquor License Number 7 from Forward Development LLC to Love Holdings LLC, doing business as Downtown Bar and Grill located at 129 West 2nd Street. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. Like the prior item, we have four exhibits. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Tracy Belser to Liz Becker dated May 1, 2017. Exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune, that document dated May 15, 2017. Exhibit number three, that being the affidavit of website publication as published on the City of Casper website dated April 27, 2017. And last but not least, exhibit number four, that actually being the liquor license application as filed with the city on March 9, 2017.
City Manager Report.
Your Honor, members of council, Love Holdings LLC, which will be doing business as the Downtown Bar and Grill, the map is indicating the site of the former Botticelli's Restaurant at 129 West 2nd Street. Is applied for the transfer of ownership and the change in location for Retail Liquor License Number 7, which was previously held by Forward Development LLC, doing business as Forward Development, and located at 441 Landmark Drive. The Downtown Bar and Grill, at this point, the applicant would plan to open a bar and restaurant at this location. The tentative open date is set for August of 2017. Again, all publication requirements have been met, and that would conclude the city manager's report.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the transfer of Retail Liquor License Number 7, please approach the lectern. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor? This time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to please approach the lectern. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? There being no one to speak for or against the transfer of Retail Liquor License Number 7, I now declare the public hearing closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the transfer of Retail Liquor License Number 7.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Morgan.
Sure.
Just making it up as I go, I guess. Amendments? Please cast your vote, and please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Please read the consent ordinances on third reading by title only.
Item 8A1, an ordinance amending Section 17.94.100 of the Casper Municipal Code pertaining to parking regulations in the Old Yellowstone District and South Poplar Street Corridor Form-Based Code. Item 8A2, an ordinance amending Section 17.94.010 and 17.94.030 of the Casper Municipal Code pertaining to the Old Yellowstone District and South Poplar Street Corridor Form-Based Code. Item 8A3, an ordinance approving a replat subdivision agreement and zone change for the C-85 addition in the City of Casper, Wyoming.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading, the consent ordinances just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Morgan, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Any abstentions or nay votes? Councilman Walsh?
Madam Mayor, nay on number two.
Any others? Please cast your vote, and please record the vote.
Councilmember Walsh voting nay on item two, motion passes.
Please read the ordinance on first reading by title only.
An ordinance amending Section 2.04.060 of the Casper Municipal Code pertaining to regular meetings of the Casper City Council.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading, the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Walsh. City Manager Report.
Your Honor, members of council, this is the first reading of this proposed ordinance amendment, and what staff has determined and brought forward to you is that the Fourth of July holiday this year is the night of a regularly scheduled council meeting. The current city ordinance, Section 2.04.060, sets city council meetings for the first and third Tuesdays of each month, but does not provide for canceling or otherwise continuing a meeting that falls on a holiday to another date. The proposed ordinance amendments before you would specify the procedure for resetting a meeting that falls on a holiday. This amendment further provides for the rescheduling of the regular council meeting currently scheduled for Tuesday, July 4, 2017, to Wednesday, July 5, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. This amendment will simply specify the procedure for rescheduling council meetings that fall on holidays. That concludes the city manager report.
Go ahead.
I think this is very important, and initially, we think of just ourselves on what are we going to do on the Fourth of July, but the entire city staff has to prepare for these meetings, and you've got a planned holiday, so it makes perfect sense.
Anyone else? Please cast your vote, and please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Please read the consent resolutions by title only. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 10A1, a resolution authorizing a contract with the Casper Firefighters Local IAFF Union 904 for the contract year 2017-2018, effective July 1st, 2017. Item 10A2, a resolution authorizing release of local assessment district liens. Item 10A3, a resolution authorizing an amendment to the lease agreement with the State of Wyoming Department of Administration and Information Construction Management for property location located in the downtown area. Item 10A4, a resolution authorizing form LP3 acceptance certificate from the Wyoming Department of Transportation for construction services related to the Bryan Stock Trail North Platte River Bridge project. Item 10A5, a resolution authorizing an agreement with ITC Electrical Technologies for Sam H. Hobbs Wastewater Treatment Facility Emergency Generator Project. Item 10A6, a resolution authorizing a professional services contract with Recycling Industrial Repairs, Inc. to replace liner wear plates on a city baler. Item 10A7, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Trito Construction LLC for the South Spruce Street Reconstruction Project. Item 10A8, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Double D Welding and Fabrication, Inc. for the Portable Litter Fencing Project. Item 10A9, a resolution authorizing a contract for professional services with WLC Engineering for Design and Construction Administration Services for the Rotary Park Pathway Phase II Project. Item 10A10, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Full Contact Concrete LLC for the 2017 Pedestrian Passways Project.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Powell, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Please read the consent minute action titles.
Item 11A1, acknowledging receipt of the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget. Item 11A2, rejecting all bids received for the purchase of two new front-end loaders to be used in the solid waste division of the Public Services Department. Item 11A3, authorizing the purchase of two F-250 three-quarter ton four-by-four pickups from Fremont Motors Company for use by the cemetery section of the Public Services Department and the Building and Structures Division of Support Services Department. Item 11A4, authorizing the purchase of three used Lufkin van trailers from CMITCO for use by the solid waste division. Item 11A5, authorizing the purchase of one F-350 one-ton four-by-four pickup from Fremont Motors Company for use by the street division of the Public Services Department. Item 11A6, authorizing the discharge of $1,113.04 of uncollectible accounts receivable balances aged between the dates of January 1st, 2012, and March 31st, 2012.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Before we move on, can I just get a show of hands how many people intend to speak tonight? I need to take just a five-minute break. I drink a lot of water, so if you'll just give me five minutes, I'll be back.
It's funny how...
I do too. What was funny is like... Our culture's centered around going out and beer, but our laws are so restrictive.
With the what? Oh, okay.
I think it's dark.
All right. Okay, folks, let's get started. I apologize for the inconvenience, but try to drink a lot of water. Before we get to the public comment, we know a lot of things have happened here recently, and there are a lot of questions. We'd like to share a little bit of information, so I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Powell for some comments you've got.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, a lot has happened in the last several months and the last few weeks, and I assume that a number of you are here and are interested in hearing from us about the decision that interim manager Becker made to not renew our police chief's contract. And I feel personally responsible to explain my actions since two weeks ago I said we should wait. What happened here is, of course, interim manager Becker, as all of us know, was aware of the survey that was conducted and some of the comments that were made that many people were concerned about. But there was a parallel process already underway that involves some complaints to Human Resources that, of course, will not be shared because that's what the law requires us to do, and it's the right thing to do. But Ms. Becker was aware of those complaints that had been lodged as well. And so, based on what she had read and heard, and correct me if I have any of this wrong, any of you, she decided appropriately, I think, to look into these matters herself. And this has all been explained publicly, but I think we should also talk about it this evening. And rather than rely on anonymous comments that are written or anecdotal reports from one or two people, interim manager Becker took it upon herself to meet with the officers face-to-face, and did so with diligence and a strong effort to meet with as many as she possibly could. And I don't know the exact numbers, but let's just say it was a significant majority of the sworn and non-s sworn officers. So that process took place since our last meeting. And all of those actions were explained to us as members of council before the decision was made public. The third part of that process involved the things that interim manager Becker heard from the officers, none of which will be disclosed. But they were characterized for those of us on council, which is why I and others made the decision that came to the conclusion that this was the right thing to do. And it certainly was our interim manager's prerogative to take this action. So I think it was appropriate for everyone to hear what happened over the last two weeks and what can or cannot be disclosed. But it was on the basis of that process and the information that all of us on council received prior to the announcement that those expressions of support were given. So would anyone care to... Is there anything that needs to be added to what I just said, or any errors?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like Councilman Powell said, a lot of things have happened, and I do believe things became to a point where they couldn't be repaired within the police department. I want everybody to know this, though. Jim Wetzel served this city for 18 years, and for a lot of times, when your 911 rang, he was the one that showed up. I know him personally. Of course, we worked together for a long time. Don't let me get this misinterpreted. I support what Liz had to do, but I also support him. And he served this country, and he served this city, and so sometimes things happen, but deeply troubled at the paparazzi-style reporting that I see and the "gotcha" photos, that's unnecessary. The man is a good man. And what happened was a progression that's going to occur in the police department. But when I say I support Jim Wetzel, I support him as a police officer and for all the contributions that he's given, and more than most people have. Being a police chief's a difficult duty. You don't always do it right. There's kind of an old saying, the first thing you learn when you become pointed police chief is you've been hired to be fired, so get ready for it. You're responsible for everything, and it's a juggling act. So, I support Liz and the tough decisions she had to make, and that does not detract from the quality of the man that Jim Wetzel is. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, now's the time. We'd invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the council to come forward. Please give us your name and address. We won't respond to personnel matters. We refer those to the City Manager. There are some questions we may not be able to answer. We'd ask you to keep it to five minutes. I'm going to ask that everybody, please don't repeat the same information. Comments in this process need to be directed to me as the mayor, and please, no personal attacks on my city staff or my council. Everything directed to me. Good evening.
Good evening. Chad Lor. My name is Chad Lor, 732 West 15th Street. Counsel, Mayor, thanks for letting me speak. I'm a local musician. I was born in the '60s, which qualifies me as a low-income, grumpy old dad. Now, if you're a low-income, grumpy old dad, you don't care about much, not much at all, but I care about three things: my family, the great state of Wyoming, and this wonderful city of Casper. I live here. I volunteer here. I raise my kids here, and I just recently discovered that I care about something else here, and that's my parking spot. I've parked in the same spot without incident for 17 years. My neighbors have parked in their spot for 35 years without a problem. Now, all of a sudden, out of nowhere, we have to move our cars or pay the city. Why now? The piece of land I am talking about is ironically called "the parkway." It's not called "the do-not-parkway." It's the parkway. It is the small area between the street and the sidewalk where literally hundreds of good Casper people park their vehicles to keep out of harm's way. I've been advised several times in the last week to keep my mouth shut and pay up and move on, but I can't do that. This country was not built by people that shut up and paid up and moved on. I have no problem paying for permits. I pay for my cross-country ski permit. I pay for my fishing permit. I pay for permits all the time, but at least I'm getting something in return for these permits. What do I get in return for this permit? I get two 10-foot by 15-foot plots of dirt that I am responsible for, that I have to maintain. I understand it's the city's property, but it belongs to the city, and I can't park there. So shouldn't the city be mowing it, taking care of it, trimming the trees, putting the sprinkler systems in, laying concrete? putting the sprinkler systems in, laying concrete, shoveling the snow? The citizens of Casper with parkways have put a lot of time and money and elbow grease into the upkeep of the Parkway. I take six kids to four different schools Monday through Friday. After school, I might as well be an Uber driver with all the extracurricular activities we attend: sports, music, children's corral, shopping, mowing yards. The kids and I are in a perpetual state of entering and exiting our vehicle. We live on 15th Street. It is not safe to load and unload children on 15th. The Parkway provides us with a safe environment to load and unload. Parking directly on the street clogs up major arteries: 12, 13th, 15th, McKinley, the list goes on. The parking on the street also slows down our emergency vehicles, our emergency response teams. Ask a policeman, ask a fireman, ask an ambulance driver, and I'm sure they'll all tell you they do not want me parking my Jeep and my trailer out on 15th Street. I can guarantee you that. If you live on a busy street, you know just how dangerous it can be. We are constantly reminded by the sound of sirens at all times, at all times of the day and night. People speed, people text, people wreck, and people die. I have personally seen numerous wrecks directly in front of my own house, right where the city wants me to park. At this moment, even if you decide to purchase a permit, you are allowed to park only one vehicle on the Parkway, no matter how much space is available. If I understand this correctly, that means I have to disconnect my trailer and park it over by Dean Morgan on a side street, then return to my house and re-park my Jeep, unload my precious cargo, then repeat this action 10 to 15 times a day. That's all fine and dandy in July, but in February, it's impossible. My Jeep holds my kids. My trailer holds my livelihood. Everything that I have for work is in the trailer. They are one, and they must stay connected. The solution is simple. Rewrite Ordinance 17.105 and state that if your vehicle, trailer, boat, or whatever you have is legally registered, insured, has up-to-date plates, and is used on a regular basis for the betterment of this community and can fit safely on the Parkway without blocking the sidewalk or extending into the street, you should be able to park there. We should be able to park there. I understand there can be exceptions. If Uncle Joe parks his broken-down tractor in front of his house for a few years, and raccoons start living in it, and the neighbors are complaining, I understand. Then, yes, something should be done. But otherwise, let us park safe. If I wanted to pay to park in front of my own house, I would have moved to Denver long ago. It's not the Wyoming way. It's our Parkway. It belongs to Casper. We are Casper, and we are here to fight for our right to park. Thank you.
Okay, I have to admit, that was probably the most fun presentation I've seen yet. Okay, message received. Counsel, any questions, comments? Is this something we would like to examine? Councilman Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of the public comment that I've got is, of course, in support of you.
Sure.
Also, I've heard the other side of that. So just getting your opinion, or perhaps how you see it, as people do see that as a landscaped or perhaps not landscaped, you know, drove-on area. They'd like to see it returned to an actual area that looks nice. People drive through town, they see city areas that will maintain and things like that. So getting your opinion.
Well, I think there's definitely areas where, you know, I mean, like down on, I think it's Second and Beverly, they have those really nice parkways. I mean, they're huge, and it's all, I don't know who maintains it, but I don't think it's the locals because the grass is just beautiful and pristine and nice, right? It's nicer than my yard. You know, when I moved into the house, you know, 17 years ago, it was mud and mud, and no one told me anything, right? So I'm just like, well, when did this happen? You know, why did they have to do this? But if it looks nice, you know, and in most instances it does, people just need a place to park, you know, especially on the busy streets. And if they're going to find everybody that's parking like that, you're going to have a lot of unhappy campers. And especially, like, you look at Poplar Street. Everyone parks with half their side on the sidewalk and half the other side on the street itself, and they're not getting ticketed. And that is actually creating a situation where people can't, you know, no one can take a wheelchair or a bike or anything down the sidewalk. It's blocking the sidewalk. So in this situation, I'm parked on the dirt, or I put in gravel. See, this is why it's so much fun. I just spent $200 on some new gravel like three weeks ago. And I had my list for 17 years to do that. So now I don't have to park in the mud. But anyways, I totally see their point. So if it's bad, if it looks gross, and, you know, they got an old junker, and it's, you know, dangerous, and, yeah, heck, then there should be something written in there. Hey, fix it up or move it. But I got a nice Jeep Commander that I just paid off. And I got a nice trailer I just bought, and it looks nice. And everyone, it all looks nice. So, and it doesn't harm anybody, but it does protect all my kids back there, that's for sure. And that's more important than looking nice for the eclipse, I think.
Fair enough.
Go ahead.
Just one follow-up, if I may.
You bet.
City manager, or interim city manager Becker, is there any plan? You know, nobody wants to see the trees torn down, I don't think, but, you know, I guess an extension to add parking, you know, is that feasible, or has staff ever looked at that? You know, Beverly, for a perfect example, widening that street.
Again, Beverly was widened when YDOT widened the street, so that has been maintained. We have not yet looked at plans related to the park strips. On council's direction, we would.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilman Powell.
Mr. Lor, you are a treasure in the city of Casper.
Thank you.
Right up there with the tower we just preserved. Take that the right way.
I'm with you. The egg beat.
Are you suggesting that we simply open up the parkways, or are you suggesting that an individual license be, licensed vehicle be allowed to park there?
Well, right now, the way I understood it, thanks to the good folks at the zoning building up there upstairs, they were really nice informing me of this, and apparently this law's been there forever. They just never enforced it. But, so, my thinking is, if you've already lived there for a certain period of time, without any problem, it's kind of like a grandfather clause or something. You shouldn't have to pay it. But like, if, say, you buy a new house or something, you could say, you know, let the person buying the house say, hey, you can park here, but it's going to cost you $50 a year. And I know it's $50 a year, which is nothing, but it just rubbed me the wrong way.
So you would have a permit that would say, "This vehicle can be there, but no others?"
Um, no, I think you could park for, yeah, I haven't really thought about that one too much. I'm just kind of thinking of my own personal vehicle being on there, because no one else parks there.
Well, that's my question. If you've never had anyone else park in front of your car.
Right, right.
But is your proposal that it would be legal for someone else to park there?
No, no, that's my parking spot, yeah.
So we would have to maintain a list of who had parked, who had permits at which sites and...
Yeah. I have had people park in my parking spot, and they were quickly relieved.
I can see where this might be harder to address than I was thinking. And I'm guessing you have a driveway, but the reason you don't want to park in there is you've got to back out a trailer every time into a busy street.
I do have a driveway, but I've got a house, 1951, you know, those skinny driveways that they used to make that, you know, go all the way to the back alley. You can get one car in there. And that's, if you park two, you know, you have to do the old switch around and switcheroo. And I'm just like probably most people here. I've got two cars and, you know, one parking spot. And I've got a trailer now, too. So technically, I have one legal parking spot that I can park. And then, the one that's not legal, which I've used for years, is where I park in front, so.
Okay, okay, got it. Counsel, I think we need kind of a majority direction to direct city staff.
We should revisit it at a work session.
Okay, I see head nods. Okay, I see enough head nods to put it on a work session agenda so we can take a look. So we'll see what we can do for you.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Yes, sir.
I think it's important, though, that once we've got the, because we're going to revisit that, it's still against the law to park on those things, so.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Everybody keep that in mind, then.
I've got my trailer over at Dean Morgan, and it's been real fun.
Good point, though.
Thank you.
So when I buy my smart car and I perpendicular park in a parallel spot, it doesn't stick out a 3.6? Can I do that now?
Probably can. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Counsel, interim manager. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to offer a few comments tonight. My name is Kerry Bruce, 5410 East 22nd. I'm the president, CEO of the McMurray Companies. I'm also an owner, director, and board chairman of Jonah Bank of Wyoming. This is the second bank I've had the privilege of forming in Casper with other investors and professionals. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of our businesses and other Casper businesses, some of whom you're going to hear from in a few minutes. And respectfully, I'd like to offer two brief observations and one suggestion. The motto and mission of both the McMurray Companies and Jonah Bank is "Building a Better Wyoming." It's a mission we take very seriously. One measure of building a better Wyoming means creating jobs. Over the past 20 years, we have, with our own risk capital, created dozens of companies and hundreds of jobs throughout Wyoming, but particularly here in Natchon County. We take particular pride in creating companies and jobs that bring young professionals back to Casper. We have brought back to Casper a chemical engineer, geological engineer, CPAs, financial analysts, bankers, and numerous other professionals over the past 20 years. One of the most important factors influencing private sector business and job creation is the confidence investors and potential new employees have in the community they are entering. The young professionals we work to attract to Casper to come to work, they're smart. They're weighing their options, whether or not they want to live in Bozeman, or Billings, or Denver, or the Front Range, or Casper. They research the cities they want to reside in, and they read the local papers. Confidence in community for us and for the professional employees we seek to attract translates into predictability and confidence in community leadership. So here's my first observation: The private sector does not have a lot of confidence in current Casper government and leadership. Consequently, companies will think harder and be more patient about capital deployment in Casper until predictability and confidence is restored. Agree or not, positive actions encourage new businesses and job creation. Negative actions and negative discourse discourage capital investment in this town. Next, Casper has a wonderful reputation as being one of the most philanthropic cities in the Rockies. We've got a strong legacy of generosity for both civic and recreational projects in this community. Big scale, little scale, it doesn't matter. This is a very giving community. Philanthropic donations are very personal. They represent a long-term investment in community. They are made simply on the hope that a donation will make a difference in the town that their family and their next generations may reside. They are often the final dollars that a family's budget allocates, and they're difficult to come by. Anyone who has been involved in a capital campaign for a nonprofit or recreational project know how difficult it is to raise money in any economic climate. So here's my second point: The lack of confidence individual donors have in Casper city government, mentioned earlier, has the same effect on philanthropy. Your actions and your behavior can either encourage philanthropy or discourage it. So here's my suggestion: Respectfully, please, be more professional. Be more deliberate. Be more patient in your language and in your actions. People are watching you. So thank you for the opportunity for a few comments, and thank you for serving our community. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Bruce? I would just say I think those are wise words of wisdom. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Again, Tony Cersey, 4410 Wolf Creek Road. And again, I want to thank all of you for your service. And I want to echo, of course, what Kerry has put forth to you. As all of you know, my family and I are spending a lot of money in Casper. And with that, I wanted to kind of share something with you that disturbed me a lot. I went to Denver recently to sit down with some developers to try to bring them to Casper for us to do some further development. The very first question asked of me is, "What's going on with your city council?" Because of that, during that conversation, that developer is very apprehensive about going into business with me and putting money into Casper. So I wanted you to hear that story because it goes all the way to Denver, Colorado, we have what's happening with our city council, and it's making developers apprehensive. And I ask them the question, "What's your apprehension?" I mean, we're going to work through this, but they're very apprehensive about permitting processes and things that would happen that cost private individuals like myself a lot of money when those processes are halted or extended due to the turmoil that's currently or has passed in the council. So I just wanted to make sure that y'all knew also that I support you wholeheartedly. I appreciate everything that you're doing for my family as permitting goes through. But again, certainly would like to see a positive outlook coming from this council. Thank you.
Mr. Cersey, I have a quick question. The Denver individuals, how are they hearing about us?
So I contacted them and told them about projects and buildings that we're looking at purchasing here in downtown. Again, they're going to do their due diligence, so they got online and looked up Casper, Wyoming, and started looking at, and the only thing that they brought, only thing that they're seeing is negative things happening, and that's all about the city council. So that's what they did.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from counsel? Okay, thank you, sir. Who's next?
Don't mind me, and you better start the timer so I don't go over.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Tad True, and my business address is 455 North Poplar. I'm also a resident of Ward 1. I'm the vice president of Bridger and Belfus Pipeline, two entities that are part of what's considered the True Companies. First of all, I do want to thank you for each of your service. I don't think any of you are up here to get rich. Therefore, I have to believe that each one of you, in your own way, wants to make Casper a better city. For that, I thank you. For myself and from the private sector, I also share that goal of making Casper a better city. We concluded, as an example, we just concluded the 13th Annual Two Fly Fishing Tournament last Friday. I'm on the board of that. This event is put on by the energy industry and attended by people from all over the U.S. and Canada. In the prior 12 years, the Two Fly has raised over $1.7 million and has benefited local charities. I also serve on the board of the Casper Economic Development Alliance that has the purpose of recruiting industries that provide primary jobs. We reorganized CADA last fall, and that reorganization is about to bear fruit on the recruitment of its first company. I believe economic development is the bedrock of any great city. You have to have great companies that have great jobs. As you may also know, we've been supportive of the Downtown Plaza and the Biathlon Track on the mountain. Each of these investments, if they have not already, will make Casper a better city. For background, True Companies currently employs just under 1,000 people, of which 400 live here in Casper. We have based our operations here since 1955 and plan to do so for the foreseeable future. For me personally, I was born here, had my K-12 education here. I'm raising my family here, and I plan to die here. So I have a significant interest in the well-being of Casper. So why am I here? In addition to Tony and Kerry and others representing local business, I want to share some of our perspectives of what is happening in Casper. First, there's a tremendous amount of positive things. As I mentioned, the Biathlon, the David Street Station. I just, Tony actually told me that since the announcement of that plaza, that $32 million of projects have been announced downtown. That is absolutely astonishing and awesome. And last but not least, we have the Platte River, which attracts tourists from all over the world. These are all things that make Casper a better city, and quite frankly, I brag about this city to my current employees, and it helps in recruiting new ones. However, recent actions and rhetoric from the Casper City Hall counter this positive trend. In fact, you can find the stories from business leaders, like Tony said, what is going on with the city council. In any business decision, you do have to be well-aware of government impact. It can either be welcoming and helpful, or it can be hostile and harmful. In Wyoming, we have a welcoming and helpful state government. But as some of the comments from outside businesses have highlighted, there is concern that our local government, if it continues as is, will impede economic development and the well-being of those living in Casper. So what am I asking for? Three things. One, from my perspective, a fundamental change occurred when, whether it was intentional or not, a divide in the city council became public. That publicity surrounded the airing of opinions and unvetted claims. I'm all for transparency, but I would encourage being transparent only on the facts and while exercising restraint on opinions and unvetted claims in public. Number two, in your search for the new Ward 2 council member, I'd recommend looking for the same qualities that I look for in any employee before we hire them. Integrity, courage, patience, compliance with government structure, or the governance structure, a focus on your customers, or in your case, constituents. Knowledge, humility, and respect. That is treating others with honesty, dignity, and sensitivity. I hope the new council member that you choose demonstrates all of those qualities, and most of all, they want to make Casper a better city. In addition, and with all due respect, I'd ask that each of the council members here tonight and the one not present to show leadership by exemplifying these qualities. Again, I thank you for your service to the city of Casper, and please know, as long as we share the same goal of making Casper a better city and taking action to that end, you will have our support. Thank you.
Questions or comments for Mr. True? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Good evening, sir.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Jim Wetzel, 2000 Block in Nottingham. First, Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask, if I could, please, for a temporary suspension of your five-minute timeframe. I've sat quietly in the back of these chambers every other Tuesday for the last three years, and I'd like to hope that I've earned the opportunity to say a few words to you and the community. I shouldn't be much more than the five-minute time limit.
Mr. Lubin, do we need to actually take council action on that?
I would suggest you make a motion to suspend your rule in that regard with the vote of council.
Okay, the chair would entertain a motion to suspend the five-minute rule?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Morgan. This isn't a debatable...
No.
Okay. Cast... Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of council. So it is with much trepidation that I come before you today to speak as a mere citizen of Casper. And I say with trepidation because what I've been witness and victim to over the last several months in our city government has been nothing short of frightening. And it is of a course of heinous and abusive conduct that I fear could befall any citizen of this community and no doubt may even continue to target me after I say what I say and step down from here. I've spent my entire adult life under an oath of service to our great country and to my community, an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States, bearing true faith and allegiance to the same, and furthermore, as a Casper police officer, to support and comply with the Constitution and laws of the State of Wyoming, the charter laws and ordinances of the city of Casper, the rules and regulations of the Casper Police Department, and the law enforcement code of ethics. As I'm sure many of you do not know what the law enforcement code of ethics says, I'll summarize the more pertinent elements of it. As a law enforcement officer, my fundamental duty is to serve the community, to safeguard lives and property and to protect the innocent against deception, the weak against oppression or intimidation, and the peaceful against violence or disorder, and to respect the constitutional rights of all to liberty, equality, and justice. I will keep my private life unsullied as an example to all and will behave in a manner that does not bring discredit to me or my agency. I will maintain courageous calm in the face of danger, scorn, or ridicule, develop self-restraint, and be constantly mindful of the well-filer of others. Honesty and thought indeed in both my personal and official life, I will be exemplary in obeying the law and the regulations of my department. Whatever I see or hear of a confidential nature or that is confided in me in my official capacity will be kept ever secret unless revelation is necessary in the performance of my duties. I will never act officiously or permit personal feelings, prejudices, political beliefs, aspirations, animosities, or friendships influence my decisions. I recognize the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, and I accept it as a public trust to be held so long as I am true to the ethics of police service. I will never engage in acts of corruption or bribery nor will I condone such acts by other law enforcement officers. I know that I alone am responsible for my own standard of performance, and I will constantly strive to achieve these objectives and ideals dedicating myself before God to my chosen profession, law enforcement. I've been asked repeatedly why I have not stood up to defend myself against the unending daily and weekly onslaught of despicable character assassination. First and foremost is because of the oath I just read to you, an oath in which I firmly believe and to which, to me, is non-negotiable. It was never appropriate that, as chief of police, I throw away decorum of the office and act in the same contemptible and inexcusable manner of my attackers. Secondly, there's a time to speak, a time to be quiet, a time to act, and a time to let processes run their course. I believed, now mistakenly believed, in something called due process. Although I've been in law enforcement for nearly two decades, I recently gained a new appreciation of this fundamental concept and principle of procedural due process, the idea of which aims to protect an individual from unfair or arbitrary treatment and afford them the right to sufficient notice, the right to an impartial arbiter, the right to give testimony and admit relevant evidence in their defense. We unfortunately live in a world of immediate gratification. Because of that, one only has to make an accusation, and it will stick. Some refer to it as fake news. Within this realm, wicked individuals only have to be the first to sling an accusation, whether there is any truth to it at all, and they already have half their denigrating defamation battle won. Over the last three years, I watched countless individuals come forward making a variety of claims, statements, and accusations. And I've watched the majority of you, time and time again, validate or invalidate the credibility of statements and accusations within a matter of mere seconds after hearing them, demonstrating no critical thinking and effectively nullifying any application of due process for the accused. One simply has to say it to you, and it magically becomes gospel truth, especially if it's politically expedient and brings you favor and likes on social media. Enter the Fraternal Order of Police survey. I have sought to choose my words carefully concerning the survey, although I do not appreciate the actions and conduct of the FOP leadership, which I will expound upon here more in a moment. I do not want to alienate officers and negate their feelings or concerns by making any statement that could be construed as a blanket indictment against all of them. Furthermore, in moving forward, I do not believe it was appropriate for this conversation to be played in the court of public opinion amongst irresponsible hack journalism and media reporting and the gutter that is social media. It was thus that I asked the FOP Executive Board to sit down and meet with the Police Department Command Staff to discuss their concerns. I'd even arranged for a third-party mediator to assist in facilitating constructive discussion and resolution. Members of the FOP Board came to my office and in no uncertain terms told me no and demanded my immediate resignation. Now that you have ceded control of the Police Department to the Fraternal Order of Police, I believe it's time for the community receives a fuller accounting of the FOP's actions and conduct. I maintain that no one representing themselves as the FOP ever attempted to meet with me. Of course, the FOP will tell you they tried, and I dismissed them. However, the FOP also claims they had no intention for the survey to be public or to go to the media. Yet I believe someone should ask the Casper Star Tribune how it was they might have received a copy of the survey prior to the mayor providing them a copy. It would also be worthwhile to know what FOP officers the Star Tribune has been meeting with for months in the context of those conversations. And speaking of journalistic integrity and reporting on surveys and votes, has any of you or the media bothered to research or look up push polling? Does it make any sense that a chief would not meet with the FOP? Particularly when the president of the FOP is a Casper Police Department Command Staff Officer. Of course, I didn't know that. I didn't find that out until after the survey was released, and that officer never came and told me. I learned of it secondhand. So this leads me to my greatest concern about the survey. The Board of the FOP clearly knows the allegations listed are baseless, fabricated, and/or grossly misrepresented. One such gross misrepresentation was that nearly the entirety of Command Staff, minus one, requested to meet with the city manager in April of 2016. Let me be clear, this is not true. Three members of the Command Staff out of seven requested to meet with the city manager. After meeting with them, the city manager then subsequently requested a meeting with all the Command Staff, in which I was included. The issues and concerns raised by the three members were discussed. The FOP is being blatantly dishonest in suggesting a different account. So is it any wonder that none of them wanted to put their name on the survey's allegations? After all, when you don't put your name on it, you can't be held accountable for making a false accusation. Additionally, when you strip away all the emotional fervor, the exaggeration, and the hyperbole in the survey, there's a very disconcerting theme. Embedded within many of the comments is a rebellion against accountability. It would seem there are officers policing this community that feel they should not be accountable to anyone or anything. They should be able to do what they want, when they want, and how they want. An officer in the survey states, quote, "Cops dislike civilians," vice versa, unquote. As chief, that was frightening. Now, as a citizen, that's horrifying. Why doesn't this bother anyone? Another one suggests we, quote-unquote, "shut down" individuals alleging victimization or other individuals who speak out against or criticize the Police Department or its officers. Again, no comment from any of you? Much of the language in the comments is vile, nasty, and crude. To include the comment, Councilwoman Huckabee felt compelled to publicly read with reprehensible motive to humiliate me. Yet the officer who wrote that... Is that the officer you want coming into your house to take a report from your daughter or sister who's just been sexually assaulted? The FOP slams me for not having a vision. My vision was clear. The Casper Police Department is a professional police organization of irrefutable noble character, respected and trusted by the entirety of the community and its citizens to guard their freedoms, safety, and security. I had a vision for the Casper Police Department. I will not apologize for focusing that vision on nobility and on moral and ethical character conduct and standards. It is those elements further embedded in core values of integrity, human dignity, justice, professionalism, and leadership that are the bedrock of why and how we fulfill our duty. The conduct of the Fraternal Order of Police should be concerning to all of our community. Police officers investigate whether someone might have broken the law. They fairly and impartially gather facts that lead to a conclusion, someone broke the law or not. If they decide someone broke the law, they turn the facts in their investigation over to a prosecutor. When called, they testify about what they know and learn based on their investigation. A jury or judge decides the ultimate question. I have never in my lifetime observed police officers, whether active or retired, engaged in an extended conspiratorial and malicious character assassination, as has occurred here. The FOP conducts a survey deliberately designed to trash the chief of police. Thereafter, the FOP takes the votes on questions deliberately selected to lead to an unfavorable criticism of the chief. Along with the vote results, they include pages of unfounded allegations against the chief, and they ensure the information is provided to the press. Then someone tells the Casper Star Tribune about the differences between the DA's and the chief's deposition testimony in the Headquist case, leading to an unfavorable article in the newspaper for both the DA and the chief. Council members clearly collude to try and stop and delay an independent outside analysis of the department, supported by the chief and the city manager. Only days later, one of those council members demands a criminal investigation and other inquiries based on baseless and fabricated allegations in the FOP letter. That letter mysteriously gets leaked to the press. Isn't it obvious there's a group of people driven by unconscionable, targeted, hate-filled, personal motive? Isn't it deeply concerning that any group of people, especially sworn police officers and sitting elected officials, would be so driven and threatened to ruin someone's career and take away their ability to pursue their profession? What would happen if a sworn Casper police officer targeted a charged criminal defendant this way? If any officer involved in a criminal investigation acted the way the FOP have acted here, they would likely be fired and certainly be found to be in contempt of court. The concerted witch hunts on the part of people in power in our city government is obvious to many in the community. The actions of council members and the leadership of the Fraternal Order of Police is outlandish and far from the type of behavior and actions that should be engaged in by sworn, retired, or former officers and elected officials. In fact, these actions of these individuals is directly contrary to the honor, professionalism, and ethical code we demand of our law enforcement officers and those we elect to serve us. It was fully within the interim city manager's authority to terminate my contract. It was also within her right and authority prior to terminating my contract to meet with the Executive Board of the FOP in abandoned building downtown one afternoon a couple of weeks ago. It was also within her right to not once ever seek possible clarifying testimony or explanation from me concerning what she was being told. You applaud her for the due diligence and leadership she displayed. Let's be clear, no credible industry leader or executive would define such conduct as leadership, let alone find these actions acceptable or thorough. There was no due diligence, and there was little semblance of due process afforded me. Last fall, city manager V.H. McDonald invited me to come before you in a Thursday council leadership meeting, where I identified the many issues and challenges the Police Department was facing, some of which spanned back over a decade. I shared with you a long list of personnel issues and concerns and a chronic pervasive problem of displacement and deflection of blame and accountability in the department that was indicative of ingrained and embattled culture. I shared with you many issues, both cultural and procedural, including several procedural and organizational overhaul projects that were underway, but that, given the scope and depth of the many issues, these were not problems that could or would be fixed overnight. How quickly an anonymous inflammatory publicly released survey demanding action from you erased your memories. This has been a display of political cowardice unlike anything I've ever seen. As a council, you've been complicit with an unaccountable FOP leadership to create an untenable environment purposely and egregiously constructed to undermine my leadership and remove any ability for me to manage the police force. Nonetheless, I've received an immense outpouring of support from the community I've served all these years. I'm truly honored and blessed to have had the opportunity to serve the community I have called home for my entire life. I thank the multitude of individuals who have reached out to me with prayers and words of encouragement. Although I leave under such disappointing circumstances, I do remain clear of conscience, knowing I was true and uncompromised in my oath and commitment to the citizens of this community. Every decision I made was moral, ethical, and legal, and meant in the purest of heart to strengthen this community's police department and in turn, provide you, the citizens, the protection and police service you deserve and should demand. To the officers and members of the Casper Police Department, I've led many men and women over 20 years in a multitude of environments around the world. You've challenged me in my leadership, and for what it's worth, I leave here a much wiser and better man because of it. In the aftermath of all that has unfolded, I ask each of you to go back and reread your oath in the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics. If you remain true to your code and your oath, press on in your service, hold your head high, embrace and embody the core values, and go guard and protect this community. If you find that maybe you have compromised yourself, start with why. Reflect on and reexamine why you came into this profession. At your core, why do you pin on the badge every day and for whom? Be honest with yourself and be sure you firmly and intimately understand why you're a police officer and whom you serve. Make your internal amends, and then hit the reset button and go be better than you were. With that said, I urge all of you in the community to man to know what this, quote-unquote, "new and different direction" of the Police Department is. I was very clear in what I believed was the needed direction of the Police Department in service to all of you. It troubles me now, as a citizen in the community, that city management apparently finds that direction improper and unsuitable. For the last several months, I've silently accepted and been subjected to repeated public flagging and tarned feathering without any ability to give my voice. So here now are my final words to the community. There's a quote from Robert F. Kennedy in which he says, "Every society gets the kind of criminal it deserves." What is equally true is that every community gets the kind of law enforcement it insists on. Make no mistake, Casper, right now you're getting the kind of law enforcement that an unaccountable Fraternal Order of Police, an unaccountable Fraternal Order of Police, an interim city manager, and an irresponsible city council insisted on. Do not forget that this is your police department, and the conduct and actions of its members are accountable to you. Thank you for your time.
Good evening.
My name is Patrick Moore. I live at 810 West 15th Street, Casper. Reason I came down here, and thank you Chief Wetzel for your comments and words. The reason I came down here is Chad gave you some information, and I'd like to expound on that information a little bit. Actually, some of us lived there thirty-eight years on 15th Street. I lived two houses down from Chad. When my wife and my family moved here in August of 1979, that area there, the causeway or the parkway, was paved and gravelled completely. People parked there all the time. Now, there was a question here: will that permit apply to just one vehicle? Well, I used to have three vehicles out there, all plated. Does that mean I pay a hundred and fifty bucks for three vehicles to sit out there? And believe me, I lived on this street, I've seen numerous times accidents. We've tried speed bumps, we've tried a stoplight on 810 West 15th Street, the traffic was backed up clean back to Dean Morgan. We had numerous, numerous accidents. Do you think I'm going to let my vehicle, especially the cost of a vehicle today, sit out on the street? You're not. We chose to stay here. My wife and I worked in public service all of our careers. We're retired here. My grandkids come home. I have a child here that lives and works in Casper, two grandkids, six other grandkids that are starting to drive, God help me. And so, those things are the things that, why I stayed in Casper, to live here. So please consider those in your process. I have an established parkway there in front of my house. It's been there since we purchased the facility. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions from council? We will be discussing this next week, so we'll...
Just wait?
Yeah, we'll take your comments into account. Staff will put together some options for council, and then council will review that and try to come to a good conclusion.
Thank you for your time. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Tru. I live at 5820 South Poplar. Leadership is hard. You guys have chosen to take positions of leadership, and it's hard. And like Gandalf said, I think it was Gandalf who said, "You don't get to choose the times you live in, but you have to choose what to do with the times you're given." And I'm concerned about what I see as great weakness on the other side of this podium. For an interim city manager and a not-full city council, to dismiss a man acknowledged by members of your council as a honorable man without due process? If you can serve your nation and fight for the freedoms of all of us here, if you can be a decorated veteran, if you can serve for eighteen years in the police force and not merit due process, whether it was your legal right to let him go or not, that's sad. Who does merit due process if he does not? Does letting him go sweep under the rug now these ongoing investigations? Does it sweep under the rug and now we just say we're going to start clean? We don't have to see if women's assaults have been properly investigated? I'm very concerned, I want to echo comments I heard before, that this city is not being professionally run. Was it so important to immediately let him go, or could we have finished the ongoing investigations and won that this council voted, what, a month ago, to pay for another investigation? And then allegations that we needed a DCI investigation? If these investigations are important, let them go. Does he not have due process to face his accusers? Either there are sloppy investigations going on here, that's one possibility, and an incompetent police force, or Chief Wetzel is a tyrant, or it's possible that there's a good old boy system, and he was bringing people to a higher level of accountability, and you've undercut him in that process. And we can't know, we can't know every conversation that goes on, but the weakness on the other side of this podium, the frequent leaks to the press that inevitably had to come from some members here, and the trying of this man in public is not professional. It is not fair. And while it may have an impact on economics in the city, I don't know, that's not my focus. We all stood and pledged to a flag, because that flag represents freedom and justice for all. I'm concerned about the police having a healthy work environment, but that's not a matter of justice, that's a matter of good management, that can be tweaked. I'm very worried about the women of this community getting justice. Are we going to get to the bottom that you can't throw out allegations and not thoroughly and professionally investigate them and bring to light your findings? I'm also worried about justice for the chief of police, freedom and justice for all, and he is one of us. And I, when you break something, you buy it. And when you break something in a store, you don't get to decide what it costs, the owner of the store tells you what it costs, and you have to pay what it costs. In my opinion, I submit to you, the price of what you've broken is you need to go back to him, ask him to come back on, ask him to regain, retake over the position of chief of police. Let these investigations that you have funded, that you have called for from DCI if it's appropriate, let them go. Let them come to fruition. Find a new council member, find a permanent city manager. Have the city manager and a full council chart a course for the future of our police department, and either let him go publicly for cause, or apologize publicly and let him continue fixing the department he was trying to strengthen and to which he was trying to bring more accountability. We can't know for sure what it is, but it is absolutely clear, there's been way too much rumor, way too much leaking to the press, and hiding things. I know not everything can be brought to the public, there are HR or personnel matters that must be kept quietly, but we need more accountability. We need a full city council and a full-time, permanent city manager. So I'm calling for you to do the professional thing, to do the thorough thing, to bring things to light, and to show a decorated veteran the dignity that you say he deserves because he's a good man, to let him face his accusers and let this play out. Don't cut him off mid-investigation, leaving innuendo that he deserved all of this even though you say publicly he probably didn't. That's my request to you, that you fix what I think has been broken, and only the people on the other side of this podium can do so.
Questions or comments for Mr. Tru? Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm here. I'm the city council. I am Ellie Bolander. I live at 1371 Harmony Road. It's a new address, it's like new development, so if you Google Map it, you can't find it. But I didn't make it up, it's really there. I know that the council cannot depose the chief of police department. I know that authority lies with the city manager. I know this in the same way that I know that an organization like the Fraternal Order of Police can't force its members to respond a certain way to a survey. But I also know that everyone has pressure points, and public figures often find loopholes that let them enact a personal agenda. I also know that this chief, this man, was not given due process. And for all of your talk about due diligence, the sole reliance on an anonymous survey to make a decision of this magnitude for my community makes me wonder if anyone here knows what due diligence means. Mayor Humphrey, you were recently quoted by Ms. Maggie Mullen, a real reporter, stating your support for police officers. I commend you in that. But as a point of clarification, I'd like to know whether you, as well as Ms. Becker, support and stand by the officers who are too afraid to speak up against the subversive factions of officers within the department, and were silenced not by fear of retribution from Chief Wetzel, but fear of retribution from the pre-Wetzel culture of intimidation and harassment within the department ranks. I wonder who among you stand by the officers who are afraid because you've deposed the man they most trust and respect? I wonder who among you is willing to support the officer who devoted eighteen years of his life, sacrificed countless hours, holidays, and his personal safety in sacrifice and service of his country, his town, and the men who followed him? I wonder if it gave any of you pause to watch the media impanel themselves as grand jury against a man who has been accused of nothing more heinous than asking that his men perform their duties with integrity and accountability? I wonder if it gave you the slightest pang of misgiving to know that one of those men you claim to support would be tossed out without his more-than-deserved pension and be treated as a criminal without having any formal charges being made against him? Innocent till proven guilty, right? I'm sure that I know less about this sordid business than you do, though that's probably more your fault than mine. But I'll fill you in on the way a great many of the people in this community view your role as members of the city council and interim city manager. After all, perception is reality, as evidenced by the truly incredible smear campaign we've seen the last few months. I will characterize a general perception and would be truly delighted if you could prove me wrong. A plurality of community members have the perception that this council and management is partially made up of people for whom their role is vindictive and personal, that before concerns of public safety, integrity, and transparency, they are concerned with personal agendas and general obfuscation of any narrative that does not further those agendas. The perception of many is that most of you are, at best, uninformed and, at worst, willfully negligent of the duty you owe to this town. Perhaps most importantly and most relevantly, it has become obvious that a willingness to terminate Chief Wetzel's contract is the litmus test against which you would apply to any candidate for the position of city manager. A month ago, I was relieved to hear that underlying issues at the Casper Police Department were going to be addressed through a thorough and impartial external review. The problems that exist in the department began long before Chief Wetzel and are the same problems that you have now allowed to force him out of it. I sympathize with Ms. Huckabee's concerns regarding victims of sexual assault and public safety, and a month ago, she eloquently addressed the audience and fellow council citing public safety as a priority. I was so sure that this concern would be addressed by the external review requested by former Chief Wetzel and former city manager McDonald, and subsequently approved by this council. And then, I was shocked to learn that rather than wait for the results of this review, Ms. Becker opted to wield her temporary authority and remove Chief Wetzel from office with three hours' notice, and more importantly, without receiving any results from the impartial investigation. But after all, there's no need for an actual investigation as long as you get what you want. I truly thank you for giving the public an opportunity to speak. I'll end by saying this: it may be too late for you to rectify the damage that you've inflicted on Mr. Wetzel's family and on my community, but my confidence in the people of this town and the resiliency of officials truly accountable to the public makes me certain that you will go forward with more transparency and integrity than you've shown thus far. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening. Kevin Hawley, Executive Director of the Downtown Development Authority, address 341 West Yellowstone. Today, I'm a tough act to follow, a lot of very eloquently spoken words, but today I'm here representing downtown, current investors and property owners, some of which are here tonight and standing behind me. I definitely understand that you have a lot of really big and complex things on your plate right now, but also know that the city still has other business to attend to, to keep us moving forward. Tonight, I'm here to talk about opportunity. Sixteen months ago, city council moved on an opportunity and acquired planes and kale arcs with talks of demolishing it for parking. Whether it's two months or two years, there still is a cost, and the result is the same: a parking lot. I'm here tonight to ask that we work to have this done with the example above, two months and not in two years. In roughly three months, we will have the Eclipse Fest, and downtown will be the hub of activity, but also have zero on-street parking in an already limited parking district. While I support the efforts to restrict the street parking for the safety of the patrons, I am still faced with a challenge every day: where are current businesses, citizens, and visitors going to park? We only get one chance with the Eclipse. We don't get a mulligan next year to do it right. And right now, we, one, don't have enough parking, and frankly, two, the biggest blight in downtown Casper is owned by the city of Casper, strewn with weeds, broken and boarded-up glass, drug needles, and beer bottles. Last week, we had track day for little kids, and what we refer to as the Goodstein Lot, now owned by the state of Wyoming, and surrounding lots were jam-packed. When David Street Station, The Lyric, all these new bars, restaurants, retail, and offices open this August, we will have even more of a problem. A few weeks ago, we had the first art walk, and downtown was busy from one end of downtown to the other end of Old Yellowstone District. This is not going to be a once-in-a-month occurrence anymore. The sight of thousands of citizens and visitors downtown will be weekly. We need to get used to it, and we need to be prepared. Demolishing those buildings immediately will solve an approaching problem with parking, but it will also pave the way for the recruitment of major, major development in that prime real estate, where your investment in downtown and the community can continue to bear fruit. I understand that this would take money to do, but I ask you, if the opportunity was worth three million dollars to acquire, isn't that same opportunity worth just a bit more to actually realize? The needed funds, too, could come from the remaining opportunity fund, or possibly from the recent sale of public property if those proceeds can be returned to the revolving land fund. I hate to make a suggestion or request without a solution, but in order to fast-track, I would offer the DDA's assistance in any means if requested, whether in coordination of bids for asbestos-containing material, abatement, demolition, whatever the case might be. This is definitely a priority project in downtown. I would definitely lean to David Street Station of what is possible with public investment, as we mentioned earlier. Over thirty-five million dollars and growing every week in downtown Casper that's led by the private sector in a three-block radius. This is just the beginning of what's to come and can be in downtown. I ask for you to realize your original opportunity in its fullest capacity and knock down those buildings. Thank you for the opportunity.
Ms. Becker, we have a plan that you're presenting to council to move forward in the very near future, correct? So we will definitely be looking at it, and council will take care of it.
What's that time?
I don't remember the date, do you?
We're going to discuss the leadership this week.
Okay.
Possibly for next Tuesday or Thursday.
Okay.
Thank you again for the opportunity.
Good evening, sir.
Keith Goodenough, former teenage drinker, 333 South Secconi. My concern, my major concern is with the Eclipse planning that I see or don't see and what's leading up to this. And I have some very strong concerns that this is going to be such a massive impact on our community that a lot of people don't even know what questions to ask or how to proceed with this, because we've never done anything like this before. And people, some of the citizens, think that we have a event coordinator, but that is not really true. We have a coordinator for activities and for some things here and there, but there is not an emergency management coordinator, to the best of my knowledge, that I've been able to find out. So what I'm asking for you to do is think about this a little harder, because if we have thirty thousand people here, visitors, if you believe the projections, maybe the projections are off by a factor of four or five, and we'll only have five thousand people, that wouldn't be a big deal, but if we have thirty thousand people here, I just don't see how this is going to work without some adequate planning in advance. My suggestion to you is you mimic what you did with the downtown plaza. You went to Rapid City, which had a plaza, you investigated the plaza, you brought back ideas, and you proceeded. Sturgis, South Dakota, has hundreds of thousands of visitors in a small town, smaller than Casper, every year, and somehow they manage that. I would encourage you to either bring them over here, or you go over there and ask some questions. How many porta-potties do thirty thousand people need for the weekend? I think that's a legitimate question, don't you? Are businesses going to get extra cash registers slash computers for the businesses that are likely to be impacted? Are they planning ahead with that? Parking, are you going to do park and ride? If there's limited parking, are you going to have park and ride areas? And how is that information going to be distributed? People have motorhomes the size of school buses. Are they going to come through the downtown area? Where are they going to park? There is a lot going on here. The airport situation with people flying in, the different police entities, there's Mills-Evansville, there's Casper College has security people, forest fire possibilities on the mountain, is people thinking about that? Get thousands of people, a fire in the center of the mountain, which has not burned, the west end has burned, the east end has burned, the center has not burned. I just see a lot of possibility for bad outcomes. And I don't think it's hopeless, so to speak, yet, but time is passing. And I just would encourage you to put together a coordinating committee of everybody and their brother and sister and actually address this. There is no written plan, as far as I can tell. I've been asking lots of- I've been asking lots of people, and I do not believe there is a plan put together outside of the superficial social activities. And that, to me, is just asking for disaster. So that's my encouragement. I'll be up here again doing this before April or August 21st, I'm sure. But I just think you're underestimating the potential for the impact. And there's communities close by that deal with this yearly, so why not talk to them? They know a lot, I'm sure. So that's my main point tonight. I also noticed on the consent agenda, you're moving forward with dealing with the fire department and negotiations. And of course, the firefighters are the only real union in Wyoming, and you negotiate with them as a council, sign a contract. I've heard some talk that there are significant issues within the fire department, just as we have had significant issues within the police department. So I would encourage you to bring in the union representatives and make sure that their issues get a full airing in advance of your contract negotiations, because you don't hear much about them in the public eye, but there are issues in the fire department. I guess I'll close by saying that today in the paper, there was an article about Hogedon and the development there. I noticed that now Hogedon is going to be offered to the public for events, and they can rent space there and use that as the same way that the 19th Hole and the Event Center also caters events. And I'd just like to point out that this is the public dollar competing with private industry, because private industry did not build a $6 million building, $5.1 million building, to use on the mountain. So every time you promote this, you're promoting the competition with public money to the private sector. And most everybody here would prefer to be called a conservative. Well, conservatives don't put public money in competition with private enterprise. So, thank you.
I do want to address a little bit about the Eclipse. And while I don't sit on any of those boards or committees, I know there's a lot of planning going on, a lot of different agencies coming together. Who would be the best that's kind of on top of that? I know the police department, fire department, Stu Anderson, health department, but I don't know enough to actually verbalize. All I can say is, Mr. Goodenough, there's a heck of a lot of planning going on around here. Unfortunately, I'm just not in the middle of it, so I can't tell you everything.
Public services.
Public services. Go ahead.
I've been doing a little bit of work within the, staying in touch with the Eclipse Committee and with the work that they've been doing. And although it's not, I think that there's some public knowledge that'll be coming out, but they've been doing their due diligence and working pretty fervently. And the work that they've been putting in and the community effort and the partnership that they're putting in has been pretty good. We're getting updates every week on the Eclipse and what they're doing because of that very reason, Keith, was people were worried that, you know, hey, are we going to be prepared for 30-some thousand people coming into Casper? So we are getting that, and I would say that it's, we will be prepared. Are we going to be prepared 100% for every possible scenario? No. But I would say that we're going to be very well-prepared, I think, as a county, as a city, municipality, just as partnerships as well, too.
Well, Madam Mayor, that makes me feel a little better. I am a worrywart, and I would just say, get it in writing. Otherwise, when something goes wrong, it'll be everybody pointing the finger at the other guy. So, thank you.
I'd just like to remind everybody that I can to maybe try not to repeat the same information. Go ahead. Good evening.
Pete Galston, 2201 Kingsborough Road. I'm really concerned with the government overreach in the downtown, or the Old Yellowstone District. I'm really upset that if a business is willing to adhere to all the building regulations that you are now saying that they have to abide by, that they cannot put whatever business they want in there. And I'm also really offended that someone drove downtown, well, in the Old Yellowstone District business, and said, "We don't want a wood shop, we don't want a plumbing shop, we don't want a car shop." They picked all the businesses who are established businesses, and they said, "We don't want this here." And I'm really disturbed. And I also feel like part of the police chief getting fired is Becker's Kansas City Shuffle. Look over here, and I'm going to slide my baby in here. And I find that really, really disturbing. And I also would ask that they would allow former Chief Wetzel to buy out his pension. It's disgusting how you have treated him. You have done things very publicly and also very privately as they fit your agenda. And it's insulting to the citizens of Casper. And I know that you did that public show where you turned in your keys, and you turned in your laptop, and maybe your council members support you, but I guarantee you that the electorate does not. And I am working with Bunky Laux, and I'm working with Steve Harshman to make it legal for citizens to recall council members, because currently it is illegal. And that's unfortunate, because I think a lot of you guys would not be council members anymore. We are disgusted. Thank you.
I'm the father of the chief, and I live at 11265 West New Segue Road. I'm going to pose a question to this council that is serious, and it is something that you painted yourself into because of the way that you've governed. Okay? How on earth you plan on hiring a super police chief and city manager under what has happened, where they were forced out? How are you going to do this? If I was coming in and I had a, I was a well-known, respected, well-respected police chief, and I found out what happened in this community, I'd say no. Because you've allowed the FOP to go in and subvert. They've done it once, you okayed it. They'll do it again. What are you going to do? It is a serious question. It is something that you all had better start taking up in your work sessions, because you will not get quality people for either city manager or police chief unless you can answer the questions, because that's the questions they're going to ask you. They're going to say, "How can I come in and establish what I want to do when I have to worry about somebody going in and stirring the pie and getting me fired?" It's really an important thing, and I think you all need to take it seriously. Thank you.
My name's Shannon Eli. I live at 2382 Sagewood Avenue. To start off with, we're going to have a kid's safety, bicycle safety day. I left a flyer on your podiums or your desk when I came in. June 3rd, I'd more graciously invite you all, we'd really love the mayor to come and read the proclamation we were getting from the governor. And on everything that's going on right now, all I can say is everybody makes mistakes, but what we go forward is what counts. And I have been sent through these city council members for a year now. Every Tuesday, me and, or every other Tuesday, me and my brother sit here, and we listen to you. And we know there's two sides to the story, and sometimes you guys can't tell your side, others can't tell their side. But just be true to yourself. That's the main thing. Thank you for your time.
Good evening.
Hello. I'm Joel Parmley. I live at 1306 South McKinley. As you all are aware, that's a very busy intersection, and I know they're doing Parkway tickets. I just ask you guys be well-informed at what a Parkway is and where people can get information. I wasted three hours getting this straightened out. I got parking tickets. Whoever's writing them, they don't even know what brand of car it is. And also, I'd like to, just the way things are run, they're running everything out, and I'm concerned. It's going to make it tough to get somebody big in here to make things better. That's everything. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Dale Zemmerle, 3035 Belair Drive. I just have a couple words that a friend of mine wrote. That friend of mine is the Lord God. Psalm 1 says, "The truly happy person doesn't follow wicked advice, doesn't stand on the road of sinners, and doesn't sit with the disrespectful. Instead of doing those things, these persons love the Lord's instruction, and they recite God's instruction day and night. They are like a tree replanted by the streams of water, which bears fruit at just the right time and whose leaves don't fade. Whatever they do succeeds. That's not true for the wicked. They are like dust that the wind blows away. And that's why the wicked will have no standing in the court of justice, neither will sinners in the assembly of the righteous. The Lord is intimately acquainted with the ways of the righteous, but the ways of the wicked is destroyed." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, guys, I'm sorry, I'm only good for like an hour on the drinks, so just a couple-minute break.
I don't know. Do you need me there?
I'll be there.
Could you do it?
I even still have the notes, so. Okay.
And I've also, and I've got the one truck in City Council, prayer breakfast, the next morning, Thursday, too.
So I want to...
I'll do a lot, too.
I'm double-booked on that with Tamara, but that's going to be bad when the mayor doesn't go. You're there, though, so you'll be at the breakfast or the mayor's prayer lunch or whatever that is tomorrow?
The servants united, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Sorry, because I double-booked, so, okay. Okay, folks. I appreciate what everyone has had to say. Just like to remind everybody, let's not repeat. It's getting a little bit late, so I have an early mayor-commissioner meeting that I need to be to, and I appreciate everything that everyone has had to say. So come on in, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council Pat Sweeney, 951 North Kimball. I won't repeat anything that's already been said. I would like to address you formally and the citizens of Casper, both of them that are left on TV after this long session, but I want folks to know that I can't support the mayoral form of government. And the reasons are many, but even if, let's, you know, the citizens of Casper need to think about this, because in this day and age and complexity of governments with the state and the federal government... with the state and the federal government, you can see just tonight with trying to do some revisions of liquor laws, the complexity of some of these issues aren't for... I mean, Cheyenne has had some success with a mayoral form of government, but there are other towns around our state that have a mayoral form of government, but they have a hired administrator. Whether you want to call that a city manager or an administrator, you need people that are schooled in this. And, you know, I've been approached as being a possible candidate for mayor. Can you imagine Pat Sweeney talking to a developer?
You'd be better than me.
Well, no, because you'll deal with him and I'll tell him to hit the road. You know, because it's not the greater good of our community and the dollars spent, you know, for one developer versus our entire citizens. So, I just think cooler heads need to prevail. I am concerned about all the turmoil, but I thank you for your service. I think one of the things that needs to happen is council is trying desperately to come together. I saw it right off the bat, but then we had issues. And I think, you know, give... The citizens need to give this a little more time. Chief Wetzel, I appreciate his service, but frankly, previous administration, not VH, but our previous administration, Jim didn't have a chance in the way that all, that hiring process, frankly. So, and I too appreciate his service, but I think let's move forward. Let's get as quickly as possible a council member on board. Let's get a new city manager. I'm hopeful that we can move the process very quickly. We've got a lot going. We've got great staff. And yes, there are many challenges ahead, and I agree with the chief's dad. It is not going to be easy, but it is possible. And I believe in you. I believe in our city. I don't believe in the mayoral form of government. I do believe in the city manager form of government for our great city. And thank you for indulging me.
Thank you. By the way, we will be interviewing Ward Two candidates on Friday. We will make our selection Friday evening. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Greg Eddie, 3100 Block, Amontavista. I'm just an average Joe here in town. Been a resident for 48 years. Just food for thought on a couple of things. I have, even though I've been a resident, my... I've never been able to make a living in Casper. I've always had to go elsewhere. So I'm a firm supporter of trying to get diverse businesses in here and make this city a lot more attractive to other companies coming in and developing, give younger generations other things to do than oil field and construction. On another note, pre-Jim Wetzel, I watched... Growing up here and being around this city a lot, I've seen the police force. I don't have faith in our police force. I've seen them provoke people, cite them incorrectly, lie on the stand. Jim Wetzel was... I grew up with him. He's very devoted. He's an honest person. He's served his country. He's been good old boy in this town. And if you know this town like I do, he's been good old boy. Due process. I know you guys have a very difficult job. I appreciate anybody who sits up there where you are. But that's all I have.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Council Paul Pat, 2781 Cherokee. I want to kind of make a proposal to this council, something totally different than anybody spoke of in quite some time, although it's been brought up in the past. And that's about the, about changing the, what day and what night the council meetings are on. A lot of people suggested going to a different day of the week because of the county commissioners having the same basic time for their meetings. My proposal is not necessarily to change the day of the meeting, but to alter, to have on the second, fourth, and then the first and third being your work sessions. I think I would really appreciate if you all would take that into consideration during a work session, talk about it a little bit. I think a good time to make that change if you decided to, maybe in the month of August, where you have the next, a little too late this month, but August would be the next month where we have five Tuesdays, where you could hold a third regular session on the fifth Tuesday, and then start on the first Tuesday of the following month, you know, in September, with being your, with being your work session. So, I know a lot of people that get involved in city and county affairs and issues and things, and there's been many times in the past where you just can't make it to both meetings and you feel passionate about issues that are coming up on both sides. It would have to be, I believe it would have to be the city that would flip. I don't think the county commissioners can actually change. Something tells me there's something in the statutes about when they have to hold theirs. I couldn't cite it, but for some reason I'm thinking it's in there. So anyways, that's my proposal to you tonight. Nothing, nothing is dramatic of what's been before me, so, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Tamara McNaughton, 2651 Lynn Lane. I don't have anything written down tonight, so we don't have to worry about me going over my time, because I don't do well up here. But I did want to give a wholehearted thank you to our entire council. Over the recent months, I've, you know, set myself up, I think, for a certain amount of anonymity to hit me in the face. I moved to Casper about four years ago. I'm familiar with police matters. My grandfather was a police officer and became a judge. My uncle is the chief of police in my hometown. My cousin is a detective. My father is a decorated detective. And so I, from the bottom of my heart, sincerely appreciate everything that Chief Wetzel has done for our community and what our police force has done. But I will say I continue to have concerns. But I do thank you guys for what you did. Liz, thank you so much for the due diligence you gave in speaking with our officers and having those really tough conversations. I cannot imagine the position that you guys have been in. You know, but my concern still stands from the first time that I stood up here and spoke outside of what I do professionally, 50 hours a week. I also run a non-for-profit working with victims of domestic violence as well as sexual assault. And I'm continuing to hear the same things. They are scared because no one listens. These are women who I see week after week coming to me with fresh bruises and marks on their bodies because they haven't been heard before and they don't feel that they're going to be heard in the future. So truly, I just, I cannot appreciate you guys enough for everything that you've done, so thank you.
We won't stop our focus on that either. Don't worry. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, we're gonna go around the table, and I will start with the wild man, Bob Hopkins, who's had many adventures lately. Okay. Councilman Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yesterday, the 15th, was Peace Officer Memorial Day, put into effect by President Kennedy in 1962. And during the entire week, that falls on as Law Enforcement Memorial Week. And it's time to just honor the sacrifices of the men and women that wear the badge and go out there day in and day out and make our society a place that we can all live in. I know there's, oftentimes, people think that we don't need the police and things would be just fine without them, and that cannot occur. Most people, fortunately in our community, have... Their only contact with a police officer is through a traffic stop. And, you know, that's about a fifth of what an officer does. So day in and day out, they are out there, ready to answer your 911 call or whatever situation may come up. Last year, 145 police officers were killed. That's slightly up from the year before. And everybody's seen the news, the stories about police, the ambushes against police. I'm glad to see that those things don't occur in our community, and our community is relatively safe, and it's because they are out there. So, PSC and officer, and that's anybody, any law enforcement officer that's wearing a badge, doesn't hurt to tell them thanks on, during this week especially. The other thing that I've got is, do we have an uncollected debt policy? We've forgiven some of them. Is there a process to it? Well, I know it's what we did. I just didn't know if it was structured or if it as needed. So, we don't have to talk about it now, but at some point. Because I hate forgiven debts. I think you should pay your bills. Unless, of course, they cannot for some reason, and some of those are that way. I voted against the, on all three occasions, against the OYD regulation. And that is not because I am opposed to the vision, if you will, of the OYD. In fact, I like it. The problem is, I think, that something is slowing that down, and I'm not certain that we aren't putting up roadblocks that might be hindering that development. And the truth is, I hate voting to get something and not having a good explanation. You know, don't bring a problem forward if you don't have an answer. But I don't. I'm not a developer. I'm not a city planner. I'm not a property owner down there, but I... It seems to me that, you know, we want that thing to grow. I would just like to double check that we aren't putting roadblocks up that are shutting it down. So, that was my point for lack of support on the OYD, an additional... Or, you know, I don't know if it's even additional, but clarification of regulations. I would just like us to take a hard look, you know, maybe just internally, and see if we're doing anything that's shutting down what the idea is down there. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do appreciate everyone speaking this evening, and these have been difficult times for all of us. And there's been a lot of soul searching involved for myself and everyone else involved, I'm sure. I think what we should strive for is a community where people can disagree, can be vigorous in their disagreement, can call for the resignation of politicians like us if they disagree strong enough. But what we don't need to do is question each other's motives. And that's where people lose me. These people up here are up here for one reason. They care about the city of Casper, and they care enough about it to put in countless hours to serve this community. And we're doing the best we can. And it's not easy. I doubt any one of you would have enjoyed switching seats with us this evening. It's not easy, and yet we are doing what we think is for the best of this community. You're welcome to disagree. You can disagree loudly. You can, again, call for us to resign or be voted out of office. I'm okay with all of that, but don't question our motives. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
To go along with that, I just wanted to put my support behind Liz. I know the decision you made was not an easy one, and especially being in an interim role as city manager. I support your decision. I think you did your due diligence, and I think you were very impartial in how you did it. So, thank you.
Councilman Morton.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if there's a formal report card or how we've done in the first 100 days. I'd like to think that I'm passing. It would be great to see. You know, a lot of things aren't reported on in terms of what we do or what we do in work sessions, and I think that's unfortunate. It only takes a few parts per million of gasoline, for example, to attain 1,000 gallons of water. So, certainly, I am council. I am city council. It's a we. It's not an I. I'm doing my best. I attend as many events that I can. Thankful Thursday for Brian Scott was great. I've never seen so many people buy desserts for over 100 bucks there, so I've done a lot. So, we have a great community. I'm happy to be a part of it. I'm happy when I campaigned. Mentioned during a work session that, you know, perhaps a crosswalk would be needed on Paulborough Street, and that was there. And of course, that's something that's not reported on, because it's, nobody, I guess, cares about that. But certainly doing my best. I'm happy to take part in this. I'm happy to be a part of the process. I think I am contributing. While I was running, I wanted to bring more positivity to city council, because I didn't think they got their fair share in the fold of the newspaper. I think that's obvious now. It would be great to have our own kind of news release even after meetings such as this. And in terms of what we've done, what we're doing, and maybe perhaps why we're voting in a particular manner, I think that would certainly help council 100 percent. Apart from that, I did have a finance committee meeting shortly before this meeting that went very well. It's great to see such great, I guess, due diligence in terms of our finances and how that's being invested, and how it's being invested on a short-term manner, just because interest rates are rising, so it's important that we capitalize on that. And we're certainly reinvesting those funds just to make the most of our tax dollars. I think apart from that, the tour of Hogedown was great. As I mentioned before, you know, regardless of how you feel about Hogedown, it is a big price tag to see, to endure, and then continue to pay for, for the upkeep of that building. But it is ours. We own it, and I think all of us should support it, and I think we do. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
So years ago, after Dan Rather took over for Walter Cronkite, who loved both reporters, he used to try to end his... He started to end his telecast with courage, and he would always say courage. And the reason he did to say courage is because it's not easy to stand up for what you believe in. I believed that when I became a council member, that I was gonna come in sweepingly, making great change, positive change, and doing something for our community. Unfortunately, I think I have failed in that. And not that I am looking for people to go, "Oh, no, no, Pacheco, you've been great," because that's not. You sit and when you campaign, you make a lot of campaign promises, and you shake a lot of hands, and you tell people, "This is what I want to do for city council. This is what I'm gonna do for my community." And about 2% of that, maybe, if you're lucky, that you do that. And so I think to be courageous is to stand before your electorate and your constituents to say, "You know what? We haven't done what we've said we're gonna do." And I know there are council members here that will disagree with me. And I know there's members on this council that say we're doing really good things, which there are parts are. But unfortunately, there is a large sector of our constituents that believe that we are not doing what we should be doing. And that's something that is being, people of courage is also to listen. It's also to stand up for what you believe in. You should do that, absolutely. But in the same sense, early on, when this all transpired for the former chief, I had asked for restraint, that we'd look at things in a broad sense, that we were patient, that we needed to be patient. Unfortunately, pragmatic, being pragmatic and being patient are not hallmarks of politicians or politics. I still hold that to be true, that we should have waited. Where the courage part comes in is that I didn't express that more strongly. The courage part comes in is admitting that I didn't stand up to that as a human being. And as a person that understands that the Wetzels are human and that they have feelings and that they have struggled. And whether you agree or disagree that they were supposed to be gone, fired, or whatever it may be, that our understanding is that they are human. And I understand the pain and the anguish that they probably have gone through. If I have failed in anything as a council member, it is that I did... it is that I didn't stand stronger to say we needed to be more diligent in ourselves as council members. I didn't comment often because I didn't believe it was my place as a council member to comment about individual personnel. I still stand by that, and it's not being a coward. It's what I believe as a council member. I didn't write down comments, but I want to make sure that we know and we have to understand that we are, probably are struggling in many aspects, and we have got a lot of work to do. And I know there are council members on this council right now that don't believe that. But we do have a lot of things that we need to start working, and the past is the past, and we need to move forward. But my understanding and who I know Mr. Wetzel to be is a good man, and is a man that gave and worked and sacrificed for this country, and we owe him a deep respect for that, and for the service he also gave to this community as our chief. And that I will stand for, and that is in my heart, and that was laid upon my heart to express that. And so I end with courage. That is a community, whether we disagree, whether we have whatever it is in our hearts, that we figure out a way to do things better. Whether you're liberal, whether you're a conservative, that we learn to work together, and how we do that. How we get there, I don't know, but I also know that in my heart, I hope that I can do a better job representing my community, my constituents, and my children, who are the most important thing in my life. Thank you.
Obviously, I think we can recognize that change is hard, and it's hard for everybody. It's hard for the council. It's hard for the community, and it's hard for the families that are involved. It's hard for the employee that had to make the tough decision, but that employee had strength, insight, integrity. I'm proud of you. It was a hard decision, but you had guts, and you did everything you could. With that, we need to adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel, and we'll only reconvene in order to adjourn this regular session. So I entertain a motion. Moved by Councilman Walsh, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
Members voting aye, motion passes.
Thank you. We are an exec.